So I hope people take advantage of that. Yeah, it's like that. Anybody got anything? Two questions?
Yes, sir.
I do. So down the list here, we got the wellhouse that got hit out here.
Yeah.
The day after the storm went through.
Yeah, yeah.
So do we have the information here at the village for the insurance? We've got to have a quote tonight for a person to fix it.
Okay.
So we should probably get hold of the Leslie Brunson was the one that hit that building. I'm sure that's the one, Leslie Brunson. And then they asked me to report what insurance she has on.
Do you guys have the accident report or no?
Yeah, we actually already took care of that. It's going to insurance right now.
I apologize.
Just to get parents.
Stop him before he.
Yeah. Anyway, so. I can move on. So you've already, if you're like my speakers, what insurance company?
I don't know. Whatever you say, they're going after her.
Oh, so. So MML is going to go after her insurance. Do you have the police report in our village office downstairs?
I have the number, but they haven't which part of the insurance they did.
MML.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't have it. The MML did it. So they contacted them.
Your insurance company contacted them?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. That's what I was going to say. You just got to get a hold of whoever has to get a hold of central records usually is the insurance company. And I could provide that number if you don't have it.
Yeah, I know.
All right.
So MML is aware of it and then we'll get this going. Looks like we start this next Monday, right?
Well, the thing about it is seeing how MML is.
Yeah.
The one paying for it. I don't know whether we actually need to approve anything. I think we need to converse with MML, say, here, we got a quote to do this. We need to get on it.
Right. The experience I have with MML is we need to make sure the council is aware of this ninety-five hundred and twenty dollars. And deputies are aware that there was crash due by a car. We need our wellhouse to go back together.
Absolutely.
And then from there, we'll deal with everybody else later. We'll have to pay the funds probably ourselves first and then get credit back from MML.
Yeah. Yeah, nothing going to work so fast. Where do you get your?
I don't want it to party anymore.
Yeah, it is all right. No, that's, I agree.
Okay. So thank you. That was one of the things I was going to ask you.
Oh.
And you, Jessica, we're good. I appreciate what you're doing.
Good.
Yeah.
Oh, and was it Sandra asked me about ride alongs?
Oh, yeah.
If you guys, I believe at the last meeting.
You had to.
You guys made them available. I've always got them available. Fill them out, get them to our central records department. They'll do the necessary paperwork. We got to run you and make sure you've got no warrants or anything like that. And then basically for the ride along, it's professional attire, khakis, nice shirt. You know, don't wear a dress or anything like that, but just pants, something you can walk around in. I do a lot of walking around town, so.
Run boots.
Running boots.
Running boots, yeah. Out and about. So yeah, I'd be glad to have anyone. See what we do around here.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, you're next.
Uh, we've been pretty busy with the storm cleanup. Storm, the electric went out. It took our skate out. So we spent, I don't know, four or five days running around. Power actually went out in the industrial park on Wednesday. Never did come back on before the storm came through. So we were hopscotching generators back and forth to the lift stations. And since the skate was out, we had to flip our wells on and run them by hand. And keep the pressure up. We got ahold of the skater company and they came right in on, I think it ended up being Tuesday, came in and got everything. Installed, put in, and it's been working great so far. They can pull it up on my phone or, you know, so I know everything's going on. Water main break, we had a water main break on summit today. Working on the Beach Street Apple Lane project and finishing up the Main Street project. And that, the pump house, we came in and dealt with that and got it all cleaned up and boarded up. So that, you know, keep stuff out, so. But just a lot of the normal stuff here and there.
So he's right, like before the storm on Tuesday, Wednesday, he's out there in the industrial park. He called us. You got any jumper cables? So I went out there and I literally took a semi truck battery out there. So this generator had a strong battery.
Yeah, somewhere along the way, the alternator went out on the, our generator, so. So it was just running off battery power. Of course, it's a diesel, so it doesn't take a whole lot, but.
Right. But it just worked out. We're out of the train there. But so we've been, we've been action packed. Ten and a month.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a busy few weeks.
Leave us alone for a while would be. And then when we did all that, then we get our wellhouse crashing.
Yeah.
Diesel.
Yeah.
All right.
Comes in breeze.
Yeah. Thank you, boy, you do. Thank you. Court of Treasury report, Jessica.
The taxes are due on Thursday, the fourteenth. And a lot of last month things coming in, so things have been graded, getting those done. Just the same, it's literally all day today. Email bills should be fixed, but if some, for some reason, somebody doesn't receive it, they should contact the office and get it addressed. Clock storm brings up the drain commission. There's one. The Sun Street shop one.
That's something now, right? No?
Yeah, that's clean.
Yeah.
There was a bag locked up out by the road at Cherry Street and it blocked the.
Man.
Blocked the pipe coming from that drain in the parking lot, so. Overflowed that and went out the backside of the parking lot.
Sure did.
And then.
So drain commission was there today looking at it, so.
They said something about like a J hook that you can send back off and call that. They said you can call them tomorrow and see what they're actually trying to tell me. I was like, oh, I'm telling you.
Is that why the hydrant for that gas station was going today?
Because of water main break.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, it came through that way.
Yeah. Yeah, we're trying to water shut off to it.
And a reminder to when people are moving their warrants, not blow it into the roads. It's not only bad for the drains, it washes into it, but maybe there's motorcyclists. They kind of received a complaint from the Main Street project, contacted the P A group and they got ran on it. Um, had a few people mention how the drop box out there, they have one on the outside. Would be easier to really, like, a lot of them tried to drop off and check if it was on Monday. When we're open, so they would like have one on the outside.
Okay.
Um, maybe we could even see about. Hold down. Well, wondering if that could be included in the section. There are a lot, but we could probably keep that alive.
Yeah, there's nothing to say on a lot of these.
They put, because they do have that curial cabinet or whatever in there.
Yeah.
And, and the protocol there is.
Might just put it there too. Yeah, I mean, it really would cost a terrible amount, but just camera there. And then camera in the lobby and then that way it's open and that way it also helps. Helps too if anyone ever breaks into that box. I mean, I don't think anyone dropped cash in there, but.
There you go.
Yeah. And if it works for the storm, it's uncertain to the county, and we're still waiting for that, so.
Anything for us, the council people? No? Got it. All right. Any questions for Court of Treasury from the council? Where will downtown development authority report? Just a little bit on that, Josh?
Well, the only thing we're working on right now is they almost gave us thanks for the parking lot. Start getting moving on that. We've got some issues with transmission. Or in that, just trying to find contractor for the Ford building. Priority has been getting a repair for winter. That's been problematic. And then just farmers field day, obviously we're doing fans downtown and will be a tent downtown. It's essentially serve the block between Main and Summit. So looking at for more volunteers are going to bring bounce houses in too. Then trying to find someone to run a cornhole termite or something during the day. Just get, get some more and probably be done. Try to get an accident company, but everyone I called was booked. Because I thought I would be kind of, I figured it'd keep them busy.
Josh, try some of the firefighters. They want to. Clubs.
Yeah.
They might be willing to do it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'll have to reach out to them because they did the station six-two, fifth priority. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. They did reach out to me. They do have intentions of doing apartments field day next year. But they wanted to see how things run for, for Austin Choice Farm there and then kind of go from there. As, as I say to them, I said, yeah, after, after we get through this, I'd love to see more collaboration. I mean, let kind of us do the heavy lifting and then they can do something that actually makes their association money and doesn't just cost them much money. Because I think it'd be cool to have a really big festival for next year. We already do have a carnival vote for, to be downtown next year. So. But.
How about the post office? We're going to try wait until next year on that, finish that up, the little parking lot there.
Parking lot, Alan's going, sending out the out to bed, advertising for bed. We're hoping to try to squeeze them for them the year we finish. It'd be nice to see that, like, gone. I was going to talk to Shane right after the meeting because I noticed our blonde, er, blonde, blind president. I watched him the one day I got on and I had to help him because he was hitting the overgrown bushes there and having a difficult time. So I'm going to see if we can just for right now lob those off, try to clean it up away from the sidewalk.
Okay. Was that along Grand River?
Yeah, I'm very angry over.
When we.
Oh, they're like, fuck that.
We, when we do something there, is there any way that we can do something with him so that he can be aware of the different surroundings there?
Um, yeah. Yeah, sure, yeah. Yeah, we can probably figure that out. I mean, it'll be nice once, yeah, because especially once parking lot gets done, that's going to be weird. That could change for him.
Yeah.
Um, because I think you kind of use that whole retaining wall to kind of find where he's at.
Right.
Um, so yeah, it would be nice to do that because there should be a pathway. I think in the design, it shows a pathway going, curved pathway going up. So I'd be able to park in the parking lot and go down to post office.
I was just thinking maybe a couple of days before it opens, maybe get with him so he can just be aware of how it's, you know.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll have to see. Do you know who that is?
At least kind of. Roughly at least. I can figure it out if you do, but.
Okay, yeah, we can figure out where he lives and.
Yeah. Even if it's getting closed off, let him know so that, you know.
Yeah.
That comes home.
Yeah, I haven't seen him a while, but like I said, it was just last week that I just saw him. Saw him, but I saw him struggling, so I hurried up and pulled off and run my hand because I felt really bad because he was kind of stuck in the tree.
All right. That was a thing to do. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Time to billings only report and council all your questions on that. Where is he?
He's right there.
Hey, Jim. Yeah.
Undercover.
How you doing? You got the ad out. I didn't notice.
Yeah, I saw it. I fixed.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
With the billing department, we have things going on well. Of course, we have our, our three primary issues we're dealing with right now. M fifty-two mobile station. They are wanting to put, he wants to lease out his land to a, a sign developer to put a big highway sign up there. On the old Michigan brew property, which is his. He has the right to do that, but I use that as a tactic to try to get him to clean up his property. All the weeds and, you know, he turned on the brewery, but never cleaned up any of that there. So I've been working with him. He's put some barricades up there now so the trucks can't drive around the backside of the property. They can only come in and park there. But the demo was never completed properly. I'm getting him, I'm supposed to meet with him and his attorney, or not his attorney, the sign attorney out there Thursday to show me that photo went down. I want him to restore that M fifty-two site completely to the field. I want to get all the concrete moved, all the old asphalt removed, all the grates out, all those and plant there some field seed out there. And then patch the rest of his parking lot that he had repaired a few years back, but it's all got holes and stuff in it again. So we're going to try to get him to patch that parking lot up and then properly scrape it again. Such is going on there with the two. We have the inevitable Jay Rittman, four-four-nine-six Grand River. In your packet, I talked to Scott in your packet, just here, I got an order that you may have left up this year to have that building vacant. He's had, Scott will know more about it than I do, he's had an attorney file appearance on other orders. But he's never had an attorney file on this order, so I was just wondering from Scott's viewpoint and others if we can act on this order. Looks like another business has moved into building number two there. And plus, you're doing this manufacturing in that building where the U-Haul business should be at. You drive there in the morning, you see ten to fifteen cars in that parking lot background there. They're not approved that kind of activity in that building. And those buildings are approved for storage, not exactly manufacturing use or any of that type of use. So I'm kind of looking for a little help and direction on what I can do with that order. As far as this.
You know, twenty-three, Scott?
I do, yep.
I, I got one.
What's that? That's the one, yes.
Yep. What do you think?
Well, I called. Torbert, I called the court today. No appeal has been put in place as to that specific order. At this time, the probably the best course of action will be, what I would prefer to do is to send Jay Rittman another copy of that order. And say that that building needs to be vacated within seven or fourteen days. And if he doesn't, effectively, we would request the assistance of probably the sheriff's department to, I mean, padlock the building. Until somebody comes around. Um, he has not paid on the fees that are also associated with that order. He has not paid on the holes. Uh, in fact, the fifty district court is informing that they have now a separate file devoted to White Rose. So they're up to speed with us on that, taking their order. So.
So I have no issue with Little Dusties because Little Dusties, that, that was rated, that, uh, C of O was due there to, in Colorado there was for business use. So Little Dusties is a business use. They can still continue using their, that particular building, their particular use. In that part of the building, but we also have leased out on the other, on the west side of the building, there's another business operating out of that. So we need to get these businesses that don't have the correct security occupancy out of there. I mean, it's actually, it's a life safety, it's a life safety issue. We have these employees inside a building that's not designed for. And who knows what he's done in there, you know, he's. He does improvements to things without permits, without inspections, you know, we had complaints in the past about electrical wires laying across there. But we really do, so I appreciate, I'll send that information out on that.
There's no U-Haul there? They got the U-Haul signs still there?
That's kind of a mystery because Chris Corey was working with the same gentleman out of Winston. He wanted to change his business plan. He wanted to go in there with just having self-stories. You know, like those pods type things where you use the U-Haul type ones and they load up and they come and drop them off. I don't know if he's actually operating there or not. I'm kind of hesitant to go into that property because they got cameras and stuff on there and there's a big to do at one time for me. Trespassing, although I have the right to do it, I don't want to poke the tiger, so to speak, you can go in, especially when I'm throwing a lot of the building right now, but. And then forty-four hundred Grand River, Alpha Omega, I think they're, they're gone. And now I've seen, it looks like a single family residence has moved in there. It looks like a family has moved in there. Which brings me to a question to the council. Is it years passed because we had an inquiry from insurance company? If someone has a home that was previously residential or still is residential in what now has been zoned a commercial district, if a house burned down, would you be able to rebuild it? And so we passed an ordinance that allowed that if a homeowner has their residential home burned down in a commercial district, they're able to rebuild it. That home in that district. But the way it was worded is kind of a little bit cockeyed in the fact that it's worded in the sense that says that residential use will continue. Not that it can just rebuild that one house, but the residential use can continue. The reason I bring this up is usually when you have a master plan that designates certain areas for future for development, this is one of them. So if you have a current use that stops and changes, like we have residential use that stopped, Alpha Omega moved in there, that changed it to commercial use. It shouldn't be able to turn back to residential use. Our ordinance is written, they're allowed to do that, so you can never, that can vary back and forth forever. You can get a business use in here, you can get a residential, business use, residential use in there. So it's something the council might want to think about, but maybe amending that ordinance that once a use changes and someone moves out, then it can't be turned back. We're not saying if someone has a residential house and it burns down, they can't be building a residential house, same owners. But if you're changing ownership and you're changing use of a property, especially if it's in that designated zoning district, that we should not really allow them to go back to the previous use. It's something.
So if it's residential, it must always stay residential. If it's commercial, it must always stay commercial.
Right, well, like, exactly, like, we have zoning districts, and that's a building, that's a nice, nice set for, like, this particular use was a residential use. Was residential, just required us to change the zoning.
Okay.
So.
So it had that dualism.
Dual purpose at the time. And we passed the ordinance that allowed if that house burned down, the homeowner will want to build it again, rather than say, no, we can't do it, it's commercial. They should build a housing. But in this particular case, it switched from residential to commercial, which we want it to be. And now it's switching back again, which we really don't want to be. And I'm not looking at throwing these people out of their house. They bought the house. And I don't have to deal with Alpha Omega anymore, so that's, that's great. And I'm just looking down the line that we should really think about if a use changes, that we should allow them. If a use changes to what that district is supposed to be, in other words, it brings that property into compliance with what that district is. We shouldn't allow it to go back to a non-compliant issue, so. Just something.
So some, so the house got, that place got sold and there's resident people.
Right.
Yeah, there's a place in the background.
I did see that.
Yeah, and they're, they're moving stuff in there right now.
How's that work, Scott? Like, does it only get pending action on the property?
Well, I mean, wasn't there a woman?
I never worked with him. You know, I kept trying to work with him. That was my, even after he threatened.
I've been in the house. I mean, it could be a home for you.
Oh, yeah, it was, was a resident, it was a resident home. My only concern is the.
The change.
The, the accessibility in the back because they completely redid that, brought all new electric in, everything inside that sort of for training and stuff. And so now these residents, these people are moving in there. They got it.
Got some electricity on there.
Got some stuff there to concern with, but.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Now, he, that owner, Fred, myself, my family, knew my wife's name and what kind of car he drove, said he would be looking for us. Fred, Brad spoke to Scott in a very abusive way about our family moving from one building to the last bit, you know.
So, so this gentleman still, Vegas still owns the property around the home?
I think he owns the property next door, the vacant parcel.
Right, going towards.
Right.
Right. Got you.
So generally speaking, whenever you have a property that has a certain designation of use and then the forecast is at some point to conclude that use when the rightful owner sells it to someone else or it switches, like in this case, from residential to commercial, technically, that new commercial person, that property is now commercial going forward. That's the general rule, so.
We, but at that point, the realtor, we should have brought the attention.
Well, our ordinance is written in such a way that it, it allows what happened to happen. Because our, our ordinance is written to say that the use, the use can continue.
Did you get a small paragraph so we can get that corrected?
Get a small part of the question. If, that's something you want to do.
I mean, I would, I would be, I mean, by pointing to the DEA standards, it's like, yeah, of course, we'd like more commercial, but we also have vacant commercial buildings right now, so it's like, I would hate to. Hate to strap an owner with backing them into a corner that they can't come back out of.
Just having, just what Jim was saying, like, the, the, the all houses in there, which if a person wants to be that close to railroad tracks and that, you know, right? I, I mean, the land's really kind of elongated right there, but I, I don't like the back and forth either. I mean, it'd be like, like the church, the church is the church. It can be placed that you can sell knickknacks in there or whatever, convert it that way. Or you could, you could live there, if you get it set up correctly.
Yeah.
But then when you do that, do you want to go back to church? Or, but just move the family off of this, go have church?
It's just that we don't, I don't, we want somebody that has a, a commercial property to be able to.
Sell it.
Sell it and be able to flip it back to residential, you know, because you could have, you could have a house in a commercial zone area that gets sold for office use, just say you have attorneys or lawyers or something move into it. It's become commercial, become a big use. We don't want that person to be able to, we typically don't see, been allowed to sell that house. It's now been commercial, been zoned for commercial, to flip back to residential again. Even though the structure could be residential, you don't want to flip back to residential again because the master plan is set up for that district to be commercial. That also puts, because if you allow that to continue as a residential drawing, that puts a problem on the other commercial businesses around because the restrictions that you have when you have a bought a residential property. So there's other things that come into that play too, and had that type of thing, so.
If I may, at one point, the, the probably the out for this whole sys, uh, situation would be, correct me if I'm wrong, but that there was no certificate occupancy ever gained by Alpha Omega that place.
No.
And so with that, that would be the argument as to why the residential was converted.
Right.
Because they never officially made it, made that lead to the commercial part.
No, in this particular case, that, that would be true, but I'm just looking down the road. If he was given, if he did comply with it, was given a C of O and he decided to sell the place, like he did. Our ordinance is such a way that he really, he really could sell it back to attorney and residential.
So that's, that is commercials on there.
Because like downtown is obviously mixed use, right?
Yeah, so that's not mixed use out there that's just for.
Who he bought it from though, that was, they used it as commercial. For Vegas there?
Yeah, because it was a shopping place, right?
Yeah, but he was designated as a home.
Business.
Okay.
Home business. Home based business, so really worth.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Happy night, you also. Good night.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that. And then Scott, you can, you got a couple of notes there, so your Jim can.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We got Lisa, Sandra.
Um, so the last meeting we had was the special meeting to adjust the paperwork for our revenue sharing. And that got approved and went off. Um, I don't know if Dorothy talked about it to you, but it's all good, so.
Yeah, yeah, I said, you read the minutes and Jessica said, so I saw that, so that's good.
Good.
So now we just got to do our plan amendment and then get that, right, you guys remember, we should be. Should be ready to rock. So that's good. Yeah. I did hear from the, because I actually happened to call the state reps office for the cell phone tower issue here.
Okay.
And when they had me on the phone, they, they're like, oh, we're being, talk to you. I'm like, about what? I guess someone in NISA has petitioned their office to look into the DEA's capture of their funds and so on and so forth. So I gave him all the information I had about that, so.
Yes.
Thank you. Attorneys report, Mr. Scott.
Um, okay, on my list of things, I was going to touch on the White Rose, the occupancy, we already touched on that. The next one was the White Rose appeal. I called into circuit court to ask them what's the status on that. Uh, because the last time we met, the court was, they had the intention of moving the case to another judge to move that along. It sounds like Judge Stokes is back at the bench and that next week they are going to inform me as to when we'll either have oral arguments in circuit court on the matter or if the judge is simply going to rule based on the briefs that were submitted, so. It sounds like they're finally getting caught up on the backlog of cases due to Stokes's medical leave, so that's White Rose as to the big appeal matter. Four-twenty-five agreements. Uh, I have the petition. Everything's in place, ready to go. I have to submit it to the Inham County Commissioners by September nineteenth. It will then be placed on their agenda, which I believe is. on their agenda, which I believe is set for September 26th. Um, it just sounds like a, I, I hope I, I don't jinx myself, but it sounded like pretty much a rubber stamp situation. Both parties, Leroy Township, whoever they want, this thing taken care of, there's no dispute, so, I hope they just go swimming there, so, that's really all I have on my plate at the moment, so.
Got you. Any questions for Scott? Okay, engineering reports, Man, boy.
Just a couple of things, good evening, we are finishing up the paperwork for Main Street, um, had a couple of issues with the mailboxes and the postmaster, so we're getting that taken care of. Um, Apple, Apple Lane water main construction, the actual pipe going in the ground, we were told today will probably start Thursday, so, um, and I think we passed on the information to Josh, so it can be posted on the Facebook, or the webpage. Um, and then, as Josh mentioned, uh, we talked this evening here before the meeting about getting the Summit Street project for the DDA out to bid, so that should likely show up in the follow rail news and views for Monday's edition, so, other than that, that's it.
Okay, and you're working on the post office for Josh?
Yeah, that's the perk somehow. Yeah.
What are, what are we going to call it? What are we talking about?
It was originally thought of, uh, I don't know when we settled on, um, I'd have to look at those, but, you know, it's either Ackerman parking lot, I don't know if it's over there.
Hitchcock Moors.
No.
I miss my wrestling hands, for sure.
Okay, advocate reports. The advocate report I have to bring to attention to the council is, I stopped by Buckley, Michigan Monday, talked to Dale, this is a guy that brings in all kinds of different equipment, this actual one piece is a, is a 2006 Sterling dump truck, single axle, it's red, it came from Holland, Michigan, I told you, fifteen thousand miles on, when he sent the email, he said it's fifty-two thousand miles, but, I mean, it's very little miles, you could literally hook wax on the frame, I don't know, they just didn't use it, and it's up there, and they're doing some odds and ends on it, it has a dump pot, just exactly like the brand new one you'd want, except it's 2006 with, um, fifty-two thousand mile on, I mean, not much usage, and he's working on putting the, this kind of stainless insert for the salt sprayer, and he's a little work back there for the salt slinger, so, and it's already got the hitch, so everything, when he gets done, working on it for sixty-seven thousand five hundred give or take, right in there, because he couldn't quite sum it up, could be less, could be more, but not much, I mean, right in there, bitty, all ready to go, fresh paint, looked like, the inside, I presented, looked like brand new, um, but it came from Holland, Michigan, and it's, it's got the ten foot blade like what he wants, but, for a backup plan, because we got the new one, that we won't have for another three hundred days. And the other part of the advocate report is, this Thursday, Detroit Diesel WW Williams is coming out to check the harnesses and everything on our other truck, that's got all the transmission update, all their, all the little solenoids we put in it, and it runs, it starts, but it doesn't move correctly without setting off little lights. So this, I'm prepaying to see if I can get the salt for the Village Whoville, to just see, I don't want us to spend thirteen thousand dollars taking a record somewhere and trying to have it fixed. We want to temporarily fix this, the other truck that I'm talking about, the 2006 Sterling, he wouldn't have available until probably Thanksgiving, to make sure everything's gotten through, it looked, it looked amazing, it looked like, like a shell, shell case, I think, as we continue to keep pursuing it, I, I shook my hand on this, and I said, I'm going to bring it to the council, because between this one and the brand new one you wouldn't get until next year, when would be the two new trucks that you have for the town and the rest of the other two? Um, they're really good people, they're in Buckley, they go out of their way to ensure you're happy.
Yeah, and I, I mean, as far as that truck goes, I mean, it's going to be a upgrade from what we've got, and when we did get our new truck, we can always, I mean, the other two trucks are, really can go to a, you know, contractor, somewhere.
This, this is pretty ambitious. The newer.
Way.
Great. This has the Allison transmission upgrade, I mean, this, this can, like, and when you get it west side of the state, you get, my dad always told me, you want to buy something, buy used, you buy it on the west side of the state, the roads are better over there than people, they're better there, there's nothing. I, I was very impressed, I, I think this would be a very smart move. I even thought it was so cute, I didn't write it, so, that way, so they said, oh, nine-one-one, we don't have nothing, we got something.
I, I asked a couple other guys, say, Mark Stevens, today, and he said sixty-seven thousand dollars is a reasonable price for something like that, said they're all going, you know, back in 2016, he bought his, his truck that, uh, I don't remember what it is, but it's a.
Yeah, okay.
But he bought it for forty thousand dollars, and once the COVID hit, somebody gave an offer of sixty-some thousand dollars for it, because there's none, there's no trucks available.
No, it, it's still a problem, there's no, and this wasn't where we could see it, so I went, I stopped in Buckley, I stopped looking, so there's something, I got pictures on it, it's a tandem truck, I went and looked at it, I went and did it, it leaves a lot of help, I mean, that, that needs, like, all the lines are bad, I think it stayed outside.
And plus, it's a tandem axle, which we're going to, if, this, I was going down, like, Main Street, down at the end, down there, and like, down by where Sam lives, you'd have to go fifteen point turn, you're going to turn around.
There's nothing wrong with the cameras, no marks, all red, no rust, it's been inside, they, he said, they barely use.
Not, uh, not when it.
I drive a backhoe, I know.
Oh, deer.
The other thing that we did, that you, a few, see it in your notes, we made twenty-five hundred bucks the day or two days after we got the premier chipper. Yeah, we got, I think we got it on Friday. Friday, yeah, we got, we did, we had it up till. Yeah, because we went through the week, and come to the next week, you guys were able to use it two days before you used it Thursday and Friday, I picked it up. And then we used it on Tuesday. Or Tuesday, yeah, it went through the holiday. Yeah, yeah. So we, so I, premier, down here in Followville, they would, they would rent it, with this bounty, they would rent it to an individual, which I worked with before, so I had to rent it under my name, although the Village Whoville paid for it, and then we were able to use it under White Gloves, to make sure we don't wreck it. They said they, they're very concerned about it, because one of them, somebody ran a log chopper, so, that didn't work out very well. I just, to clean up our town as fast as we did, it's because we had an eighteen inch inlet, uh, chipper, that Greg and, everybody ran it, right, said I couldn't believe how much it fed, and there was no, they, they were very quick, because it fed so much wood so quickly, so we got it completed pretty quick. And one of the other things we did, I got this done, I got it, grabbed it, shame, actually, um, brought it back, or took it back.
Yeah, and that one, that one was actually really nice for the storm.
It was a little big.
I think it's just too big, it had, um, it had vertical rollers on it, and the problem with the vertical rollers is, is there's a gap on the backside of the vertical rollers, so when you go up there and push a big arm loader brush in, if you get it on the backside of them vertical rollers, sometimes it doesn't want to, it doesn't want to feed in straight, where if you've got the horizontal rollers, bringing it in, I can't figure, I might have rubbed my belly back, but it's pulling it in straight, so no matter where you get it, and that shooter pulls it in, and Jim said, on, I think that was a.
Eighteen?
Yeah, the one we had was an eighteen, but the one that we're looking at is a, uh, twelve.
Twelve?
Yeah.
So we need, like, no, no less than eight, and you can get two, eight, twelve, forty, sixty thousand? The one we rented was a hundred and thirty-two thousand. So, but we do have our chipper we have now, and it is, it's.
We spend more time working on it than we do using it.
It's, there's so many things that are happening, with the tumblers out of balance, and you've got to keep it, the teeth closed, and if it's too close, it's bad.
It's too close, it starts grinding metal, and if it's too far away, all it does is just wrap all the stuff up inside of it.
Makes it stringy, so, we, that is a, that is a must.
It's about, it's about an eighty-six, I think, the chipper, so.
So I think, I think that, as we keep looking, we had one for forty, that Ryan seen?
Yeah, um, we're looking at one right now for thirty-six, but I told him, it's expensive, but I don't.
But the council needs to be aware that we're, we do not have a whichever one we can rent. At this point, we.
What did, what did, what did that cost?
To rent?
Yeah.
Twenty-five hundred bucks.
That were, they, they gave us a weekly price on that, and they, I'm sure.
Caterpillar, we, so, so anybody else, anybody else, I'd pull up, would have been two hundred dollars a ton.
Yeah, I, yeah, I called on one of them, yeah, and they said, yeah, we'll rent it, it'll be two hundred bucks an hour, and I'm like, man.
So they have an hour meter. High five. I love this. So, somehow we got to come up with, like, an eighty thousand dollar chipper, I believe we should be able to get this dump truck for the year, and make it way warmer and fuzzy for our, our season, winter season, we don't have to make a decision now, as I progressively get to see this, uh, I'll get pictures, and I'll be able to bring it to council, show you guys, so you're not being blinded, but it does have a caterpillar in it, that are very well, um, recommended. So.
Is it a cat or a cobbins?
It's a cat.
Okay.
Yep, it's a C1286 cat.
Okay, so it's not a little one, then?
Nope. Well, should be ghost be racer.
That, that, that'll help out a lot with the longevity of it.
For Greg will put a little block behind the tub. I, could you imagine going back, like, with the chipper, he was so excited, he would have back with the dump truck, like, I have, now you need to adjust the brakes, I can't.
It's weird.
So never get things so, that's usually the indication we'll be having, so. And then the other thing that I think we should put the word out is, Jessica had to be the crossing lady twice, so.
Oh, yeah.
Does anybody know anything else?
She's, she's, um, Stanford, she's not doing it anymore.
Oh, you're retired.
She was able to do it, so, yeah, we're tired.
Yeah, you're retired. Okay. All right, anybody else have anything to bring to that? Okay, how about you, Mr. Josh Rocky, we, you good?
Yeah.
Chipper and a truck, anything else you can think of? Well, I'm still working not very well with, um, our sidewalk deal programs, and you've got a couple people that you were talking to, maybe reset out to winter removal and sidewalks, maybe?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'll have to re-pass that again, see if I can find someone to grab it.
I bet looking, wherever I look at them, looking, see what other people use.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we got new business, CertAir Wireless. You heading out, Jim?
How you doing?
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you, Jim, thank you. Back here from home. How you, attorney?
Hey, good evening, uh, I'm, uh, Matt Bates from CertInternet, and, uh, relatively local, I live in Followville, so, um, and I, first, first things, I have to apologize, things kind of happened out of order with your community on the way things work. Uh, normally, we come and talk to you long before you see permits and misdig requests and everything else coming through. Um, one of the things that we did this year, and this is a trial run for us, we have a partner, a, a design and engineering firm, that we've been working with for the last several years, and they said, you know, we also manage construction and do the project management and everything, do you mind if we try and do a little bit of a trial? So we thought, well, okay, we'll do some small towns and see how that works, so, Weberville, Williamson, Stockbridge, um, several, uh, communities in southwest Michigan, we thought, sure, no problem, we'll let them, you know, here, go ahead, take it, and see how it goes. Well, they missed a few steps, so, um, anyway, I just wanted to, we're, we're backfilling those, uh, those steps right now, and I've reached out to everybody, and I think, uh, they, they did back off you guys on the pressure, correct, on the utility?
The eight, the eight thousand mystery.
Yeah. So, uh, anyway, yeah, we are, we are a fiber internet provider, um, we started in nineteen ninety-nine as a fixed wireless provider, um, I've been with Cert previously, Freedom Net, since two thousand five, um, so, uh, um, a- anyway, we, we've made the transition from fixed wireless to all fiber optics. Um, we built out the large majority of western and northern Livingston County, and just this last couple of months, we were awarded a roughly twenty million dollar grant from the Robin program to fill in all the gaps that we weren't able to build on our own, with our own capital in Livingston County. So, um, broadband is really the great equalizer in any community, and we can only afford to build certain areas with our own capital, we have to have the home density to do it. So that's why we look at the villages, the cities, the towns, we start there, we get established in, in all of these different areas. Once we're established, then we can go out and we can talk to the rural communities, we can look for grant opportunities, we can, uh, talk to the state, we can look at federal monies, to build out into the rural parts surrounding the areas too, that grant money can kind of offset the costs that it would, that it takes to build those areas out. Uh, but fiber, I, I know you guys have just gone through a little bit of a headache with Comcast in the village here, and I, we don't want to create another headache, that's the last thing that we want to do, but fiber optics, it's completely different, now, you know, Comcast came in, they built, they built their cable plant, it's still copper, it's still an older technology, um, and fiber optics, it, it, there is no next level to it, there isn't a better technology yet, um, I, I won't say it's the end-all, um, because there could be some, something at some point that may come out that's better, but for the foreseeable future, fiber is where it's at, and we can continue to upgrade the glass, the fiber that's in the ground with the electronics that's on the end, without having to change anything in the ground. So, um, I, I talked to Josh and Sam last week, and just kind of went through a little bit of, you know, who we are and what we're looking to do, and I got everybody a copy of the Metro Act, and, uh, the, the application for the Metro Act, and then I also put a map in there. And you'll notice, if you look at the map, not everything in the village is covered right now. We're going to probably have to take a two or three or four phase approach to the village, I know some of the concerns that I heard was that the, the business park doesn't have good options for internet service. We didn't know that, that was great information to have, so that may kind of change our direction, and may shift where we focus next, after we do the core portion of the bill.
Yes.
Oh, everybody's got the map, okay?
You have a map?
So if you look at the map, the areas that, excuse me, I've got heartburn pretty bad, um, the, uh, areas that are, that are not dark shaded, they're light blue surrounded, those are the areas that we would like to initially build. The areas that are shaded in red are all the areas that we're looking at kind of as that next wave, and you also see that the business park is not included in there at all, but because of the information that we now know, we'll probably look and see what we can do to get that built. So I'm really here to answer any questions that any of you might have, uh, for us, and I'm, I'm also a local contact, you guys can get ahold of me anytime you need, if there's a problem, I can run over here, uh, obviously, we would like our project manager and engineering firm, they, to handle things for the most part, but if something's not getting taken care of, feel free to give me a call, and I will step in.
Okay.
So did you say you were switching from, um, like, the satellite internet to the fiber, or you're still going to support that?
We're, we're going to continue to support the wireless that we have, we probably won't upgrade it anymore, we'll continue to operate it till there's no customers left on it, uh, but anything new going forward we build is, is almost solely on fiber optics.
Um, how long of a project?
Um, how long of a project do you think that this is gonna be for a village the size?
Uh, honestly, three to four months. I think it will go pretty quickly, I, I, we're looking at three to four crews, I don't think for a village the size, any more than that is appropriate, that's gonna be a lot of activity in a pretty compact area, and, and your core DPW, you won't be able to keep up with the utility you locate, so.
Yeah, especially with Comcast being in here and, uh, um, Waterman project going on down Beach and Apple, it's, it's.
And Comcast.
Cool.
Yeah.
Any questions?
The big thing about fiber, so if you get Wow or you get Comcast right now, and let's say you get their one gig plan, you get one gig of download, but you get twenty-five mega upload. On most fiber providers and all of our fiber networks, if you get a one gig service, you get one gig download and one gig upload, it's symmetric, you get both, that's the big difference with fiber.
It don't matter which way it goes, sir.
Doesn't matter.
And price-wise, is it comparable with what they offer, or are you guys a little bit more expensive because?
We're actually, we're actually cheaper, um, so our lowest plan for a hundred meg by a hundred meg is thirty-five dollars a month. Our one gig plan is seventy-five dollars a month. That is no contract, no installation fee. So you, you can become a customer, you can stop your service, you can put your service on vacation if you go down south for the winter, whatever it is, we will certainly work with you, you can start and stop service whenever you want, we're not gonna lock you into a contract. The good news is though, once you get our service, you have that price for life. As long as you do not make a change to the service, you don't cancel service, that price is locked in for as long as you want the service.
And can you bring your own equipment?
So we will bring in a, um, a device that converts the light and the fiber to regular ethernet, so you can do your own router in the home if you want. If you're on the middle or higher tier of our plans, included in that is a full managed, um, in-home wifi system.
So if you have something that works with that, do you give a discount for already having your own equipment?
No discount for already having it, no.
But you can still use it?
Correct.
Now, do you have to rent your equipment, or is it under that seventy-five dollars?
It's included in that seventy-five, that seventy-five dollars is all inclusive, that includes any taxes, fees, everything, there are no hidden charges, it is that price, that's what it is.
I think it's, I think it's a great thing, I mean, as I said, as Adam and me and Sam talked about is, uh, you know, giving the residents more options is better than, you know, that, and the cool thing about fiber optic is they don't do, as far as I'm a fan of, majority of their stuff, they try never to be aerial, if it possibly goes in the ground, so most time when it comes to fiber, fiber will still be running, even if it's storming, sort of, um, because all their stuff is very well protected, you know, it's not hanging from there, so it should also eliminate a lot of the lump, um, obviously, what we currently have.
Well, I know Evan will one company that we got to use, because now we're twelve years.
Well, there's, there's that one, and then there's another one.
I only have one.
Wow.
Yes.
We have from here.
I only have Ralph. And nothing else.
Would the council like to make a motion to approve or disapprove?
I will make motion to disapprove in our office line, and.
Presented by Mr. Adam Bates.
Adam Bates.
All right, second.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Show more? Yes. Standoff?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Yes. Have you seen you soon?
All right.
I appreciate you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Actually, Scott, that I didn't take his call, I was extremely busy at that point.
No problem.
I did, well, the time that, I said, I, I definitely can take you guys, seeing on.
Bye, Alan.
Did you use to work out the field?
I did, many years ago.
Yeah, did you put, uh, antenna up on the tower in Stafford?
Yes.
Yeah, that's where I remember you.
Yeah, no, I've been around a while. Yeah, I started off as a field technician, went to a, to a tower climber, then became a network engineer, and, uh, then, uh, I deployed a couple times in the military and came back and I said, well, you know what, it's time to make you a manager, so I was managing all of our field guys, and then now I'm responsible for the entire state of Michigan, so.
Upgrades.
You got fiber optic everywhere.
He was helping me see something out there.
So make only trees behind the library, I don't know how the council feels, but these two over here in the corner, the, I feel that we should have the EPW guys remove and leave the one out front, but that's just my opinion.
The ones back here are doing well, plus Amanda's got, Amanda wants to fix that all up back there so she can have outdoor reading.
Yes, so, they're the wrong type of trees that close to the building, and whoever wants to do the roof repair someday, they'll tell us that the trees are messing up the road too, so.
Well, I think it would be nice to have that for the kids, and I have heard that even if you start treating trees, they have them.
There's no guarantee.
Absolutely, there's no guarantee, you can put money into it and they can still just, so I think that would be very nice for the community, for the kids. I mean, I'm not one to, to say, oh, but, you know, take the trees out, I like the trees, but when you already have something, yes, that is sick, there is no guarantee that any amount of money you put in is going to save lives.
So, the one thing that we actually studied a little bit with Shane is make sure our new, brand-new backhoe can operate easily, we'll go, I'm sure there was, our, 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 cause more damage for us, because it might be our need for foundation or someone else, careful taking them out, back two corner over here, and then they got bees in there, not, not the good bees either.
Oh.
The apartment bees? Oh, wow. She said they were the mean ones.
I need to stay away from here, I'm allergic to them.
It's the order. But would that remove the front one too then, you think, or?
No, she said the front one was fine.
The front one was okay.
She said the front one was fine.
So, two over here.
Yeah, but if those two are already infected with the dark, chances are, you know, I guess we'd ruin that one too, yeah.
I mean, we could always start with these two, and yeah, if something happens to that one, we can yank it.
Okay.
Yeah, I could jack the door, get them.
You know what, right?
I mean, they're, you see how close they are to the building, how they're chewing into the brick? I mean, a, a, a nice boundary tree would look nice in here, or just a long tree that close to the building.
Yeah, yeah, we understand, the friends of the library, we're looking to spend some money, so they thought they'd invest to it.
That would be nice.
I'm like, well, if I take it out of our hair after we pull trees, okay.
You pull the trees, I'll do some, do some greenness.
Take out there, yeah. I said, do the water thing.
Cause they were out there enjoying it until the bugs and the bees got there, and then the trees got to be not as much.
So instead of just giving shade, they're giving, running away.
We just, we don't have to act out of it, just we let the DPW guys remove the two trees and check the third one out, see. I don't, I don't see the reason for, the motion would only be if we wanted the guys to approve it, so.
No.
The guy kinda knew when I was, I was here that day, and I kinda told him, eh, and there's probably the wrong place to begin with.
They need a real key, look like a library, move them out over there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They would, that would make, they don't wanna do that, yeah. Okay, another one is, uh, the special vet for men, homecoming, and farmers' field day. I, I recommend that the council will be approved, the special vet for men, homecoming, and the farmers' field day.
Uh-huh. Second.
We're not gonna have any money involved, correct?
Sure. I think the DPA will. Yeah.
Try and pull out of that thing, but I figured the villages, I mean, if you want me to, I can, for cold dog right over by the weekend.
Well, let's go, I mean, what we can do, you know, cause we have the council.
Yeah, but, um, but yeah, I, I, I thought about that today, I'm like, oh yeah, I totally didn't pull it up.
Kind of included it in the motion.
Yeah, on that, so, yeah. I was like, well, I feel like the village is sponsoring it, you know, too, so, I don't know, I think it's necessary. It's like asking permission from yourself.
Right. Show more? Yes. Standoff?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Hitchcock?
Yes. Sam, do you there?
Yes.
Motion approved parade route for homecoming and use the brand word for the Farmers Field Day, September twenty-ninth to thirty-first. I recommend the council to approve this as well.
Uh, what number is that?
Oh, I have, oh, I'm bored, what do we got here? You did, you put a book, yeah, okay.
Yes.
iPhone, just, okay. All right. Number three?
Okay, it's like, you, you, you inserted something there that I didn't actually see.
That's why I got glasses. Okay, so the next one is the Ingham County Sheriff's Agreement. So we have a grease of hours, I think, everybody got a chance to see that?
Yes.
Yes. Except for you.
And I asked if they can make sure they show us, you know, eighty hours, how they can show it, so there's no question on the elderly side. They said they could do that.
Nice.
So we gotta see which way, we got to twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and twenty twenty-six. Thank you for getting down there.
Yeah.
Getting back eighty hours.
Yeah, we, we got a big needed.
Yeah, well, it was, it was a lot of phone calls.
There has been an increase in so much, there are many different things that our community definitely needs this.
It's hard for just one.
I was just thinking, when I talked to him, I said, I mean, he, he actually worked up a little bit, we got some cadets, we did, go for that again, I'm like, sure, would be nice.
Yeah, I think it's going, that, that everybody in the community is going to be very happy hearing that that is gonna happen, well, maybe not everybody, but a lot of people will.
A lot.
I said, I think that, I, first I said, I think everybody is gonna be happy in the community, and I said, well, maybe not everybody, but most everybody.
Yeah, I mean, normally somebody will feel happy, but.
Yeah.
I mean, I do, the only thing I'd be worried about is if they are gonna place cadets, would, hmm, making sure that Scott relates to them that it's about community policing, not about how many tickets you can get.
Absolutely.
That was my worry, we didn't really, so I talked to somebody else.
I don't, I don't think the cadets have, like, arrest powers or anything like that, cadets are the ones that are in training, they would be good for showing up out here for, uh, uh, the field day.
Yeah.
Yes.
Stuff like that.
Okay.
That's, that's more of a PR thing for the sheriff's department, um.
Those, those sign guys to us again, like Chris, this Andrew R. Buck, so, I was there, right? So that's what we spoke with, but when he first initially started, I'm like, hey, you still gotta want, I said, yeah, can we get eighty hours, let me check, we got that, and I think this is awesome, so.
Yeah, no, I, like, I think it'd be terrific if he turned to have police force at night, especially, but, um, but yeah, like, like I said, I still have remembrance of the, the young, young gun that was in town that, I mean, he ended up rolling his car outside of his jurisdiction in a completely different county.
Yeah.
But, um, he, you know, he also, I'm, I'm pretty sure, uh, it was, he wrote more tickets than any other municipality combined in any county.
Yeah.
Um, in the moment he was here, so, so we just don't want that, because I, I think the, the police officers that we've had fortunately here have done a really good job with restoring the taxpayers' faith in the police department, and actually wanting to, you know, they see him and they're happy to see them. Um, I just don't wanna see that relationship ruined, and I'm sure Scott Littleworth won't want that either, so I think that's, I mean, who knows at the start of that process of making community policing in town like a huge thing, so the s- school, all the kids knew, knew him, all the businesses knew him, all the, um, all the residents knew him, and they felt comfortable talking to him if they need something, I don't know, they see that, so I just don't wanna see someone that's all about the trap stops or, you know.
Trying to make it hold out.
Yeah.
Cause as I, I said that, uh, years ago was the, you know, when they were just trap stopping, I mean, trap stopping does catch some things, but it doesn't, um, it doesn't, you know, it's not hard to understand that if you see an Ingham County cop out at like fifty-two, that you know that he's not in town.
Yeah.
You know, and like that was something even as a kid when I was growing up here, it's like, if you knew the cop was speed trapping, it was a free-for-all in town. Um, so I just don't, you know, as I've always, I've always thought the idea of the cop patrolling, yeah, he's coming down Summit, and sees a car flying down River, yeah, no happen, but, um, that sitting still, unless they are trying to discourage speeding, um, is, you know, doesn't, isn't really helpful, a lot of people wouldn't actually make any money off the tickets, so it doesn't really make sense, it doesn't really help out, um, and then, then you get the stigma, which other towns have gotten over the years of, don't go through that town because the cops are guaranteed to pull you over, and no one wants that either, so, unless they don't wanna be, you know, if the crime criminals don't wanna go through town, then that's my, or fluff animals and that's.
So I recommend the council to accept the new contracts, the Ingham County Sheriff's Office, starting January first, twenty twenty-four, and register through, um, twenty twenty-six.
So.
That gives us. And that gives us eighty hours.
I would have served it.
It gives us eighty hours, a factor, eighty hours to people.
You can have some of them all the same.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, you said, boost it to eighty hours of coverage?
Per our conversation, the villagers will like to revert to eighty hours per week law enforcement coverage beginning January first, twenty twenty-four.
Is that gonna be seven days a week?
Our current amendment agreement is to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, um, all of this with the option of the agreement, additional one-year period, it'll be the eighty hours, what, I don't know how to answer that for you.
Well, right now we're getting forty hours, that's four tenths.
Okay.
So if we're gonna get eighty hours, is that two deputies doing four tenths on the same days?
They usually don't have them on the same shift together.
No.
So, and last time we had eighty hours, they had.
I mean, eighty hours, that's eight days of ten-hour days.
So you think two, you think two officers are gonna come here and do the, no, no, the way we did it before with Rhonda Imison and Mel, Melissa was, Mel, Mel, Melissa was, Mer, Mer. They, they altered, so we only have one deputy here, and then when he, they altered, so they're not here at the same time, no.
But are we going to get seven days of coverage?
You know what, when it comes to that, I'll let you look at their little layout, about the eighty hours a week.
I, I'm just curious, because I had a conversation with Deputy Hagman at my house,
Okay.
and I asked him about his hours of coverage in the village, and I pointed out to him his cards that he filled out, that he turns in once a month of the hours he spent in the village, and I pointed out to him that he's coming up short every month, minimum fifty hours every month. His answer to me was, well, if you wanna see my time card, you can fully request them from the Sheriff's Department. Now, is he going to fill out and document his every hour in the village? Or is it gonna be the same thing? Right now, he's filling out his time card of the time spent outside the village, not in the village.
Andrew, we'll have Andrew come along, we'll use him to explain that, they'll understand, okay?
Okay.
That's what we'll do. All right, now with all that discussion, now we have roll call on board, right?
Show more? Yes. Samuel?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Hitchcock?
Yes. And we will, I'm, I'm pretty sure the Ingham Sheriff will allow Andrew, both. Come out and give us, and we'll get a layout of how we do it, I, I like the way Merle and Rhonda did it, and, um, even when we had.
Matt.
Matt, Matt Wilson did a good job too, so, that, we're gonna have an additional forty hours, that'll be mismatched, however you want to. So we'll get a layout on that. Okay, next thing is fixed wellhouse bulk is nine thousand five hundred twenty dollars, we can get that started, you guys can start right away on it, he's from Howell, I think he's from Howell.
No, he's from, uh, Duran.
Duran. Just gearing it up, the only thing they might have a question on is we'll have to, between Shane and I, we'll figure out if we can get a steel-structured door that same size, that might be the only hiccup, right? Like I said, possibly be the hiccup.
Yeah, yeah, he said he'd work on it, but, yeah, we can, we can probably come up with something like that.
That we are gonna recover this money from the insurance?
That was my question, cause I, we all know the insurance companies are gonna come back with what they feel is. That was my question, cause I, we all know the insurance companies are gonna come back with what they feel is, what is that term they use? It's like when you go to the doctor's office.
Was it sufficient?
Thank you. They use a term, you know, they pay what they feel is.
That would be loss.
I called a place over the reason that they called me back. I called another company out of Howell that said the owner is no longer in service. So I Googled and I talked to the people that I knew about block layers and I, I saw my tail. Then, and then our buddy Ryan, our DPW guy Ryan, he was able to find this guy here. And it don't look very out of hand in my opinion to have that fixed. The one thing we have to do as councils is we got an open wellhouse. This is kind of like a homeland security problem. People can get into our wellhouse unless we're, wow. And the next thing we're gonna have to do is we're gonna have to put steel pillars around it so somebody, when they drive a car into it, it doesn't hit our wellhouse.
We'll get some big shoulders. Some big old concrete pillars, yeah.
They're gonna have to do something because it's, it's really scary.
It is.
If they hit it any harder, we'd still be staying here with that well not working. We're just lucky it didn't make us, well, still working. I mean, I, I look down like, oh man, something. But you know, we're gonna have to come back and we're gonna, and we can get all the Christina Homeland Security, see if we get money for that, for the putting poles up and we're, we're gonna have to protect that building and the one over by Skipland. We're gonna have to put poles around it, protect it.
So what insurance company basically will pay what her insurance company will hopefully, maybe?
I just, my opinion is, I'm a business person and if we don't act on this and get it done this way, then we can get credited back.
I'm just asking.
You know, we, no one, by the time somebody.
I know, it's a D.
Which is really wrong. We should have already, we should have already been able to get a check cut or their, their insurance company should have already been on it and they didn't.
I agree.
So it's slow as molasses and I don't know why.
Because that's how they work.
It's insurance.
Yes.
And they're good about taking your money.
Yeah, that's why I was just asking, so what her insurance company doesn't pay, hopefully ours will add up to that amount.
So we sent in this quote to get it fixed and a couple other things. And they are going to go after her insurance, herself. They're gonna give a deposit check, but they go after her. So.
Yeah, I agree. It definitely needs to be fixed. This is something that cannot, not be fixed.
And how long, how long do you think he's gonna, how long did he say would it be to fix that?
I assume it'd probably take about a week.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't know. He's, he's a fairly reputable block layer, so it might only take him a couple days to really do it.
It takes him a month.
Yeah.
No foundation damage?
No.
Wow, thank heavens for that.
Say the attention.
Oh, he was asking no, no foundation damage?
No.
Yeah.
The block wrote, I mean, it's almost like we could go over there with a rector set and almost do it ourselves.
Right, yeah.
Right, but the door is the issue that I can see because you're gonna have to narrow up the blocks and then get the new door that she made that look like a cord.
Big boulder.
Yeah, and we need to get on it because if we keep stalling and we wait, the, the rope's gonna start sagging. Cause right now, we got everything kind of, but it's not gonna take much weather, start messing it up. So I, I guess that's my deal is go forward and get it taken care of because it's our wellhouse and they, our insurance should be right on it, but they're not. So that's M and L and don't have much faith in them at this point, but I don't have faith in insurance to begin with. I need somebody in the council.
I'll make a motion to approve quote number 339, not to exceed the amount of $9,520 to repair the wellhouse at 180 Pine Street.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? None?
No. Shonworth?
Yes.
Standoff?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Hitchcock?
Yes.
Keep it posted if you run into anything in the M and L or if you ask more questions. Should be a, should be a 911 in my opinion. But we're gonna, when we get back, we'll see, hopefully we can figure it out, build a slot line and see if we can see if we can probably get a little steel and just.
We can use water, we can use a water main too.
Water pipes.
We're gonna have to do it.
We got a new backhoe, we'll have to try it out. Any other questions? I will work on that with Sheriff. I know we're gonna go forty to eighty hours and hopefully it really.
But I, you know, I'm just saying with eighty hours, we should be able to get seven, eighty with the coverage.
We should, and I, I strongly understand what you're saying. And money-wise, still, we're better ahead sticking with the Ingham County Sheriff's Department versus trying to get home.
Correct.
I, I still firmly believe in that. Cause you get so much. If we need anything, we get, get a lot. I think it's just about the people that they bring into the town and hopefully we get the ones who paid before that everybody's super nice and likes our town. So.
Right.
Anybody else who wants to add to our meeting that we succeeded?
I would just like to say, I did get an email from Weberville Schools, from the high school. They, at the next game on September 15th coming up, they are going to recognize the efforts of the local community for people that pitched in and they are going to make admission free. They are going to have a donation table for anybody that would like to donate money or like any food items or anything to help out the food bank because the bank is there, you know, giving out things. So, you know, I was like, they have a list, so I just thought I'd bring it up.
That's pretty nice.
If we're gonna go to the game, like I said, it's free, but if you wanna donate any money to get in or any food items or any things like that.
Um, when does it get out of there?
It's the 15th, which would be Friday, I suppose. What time? Um, no, I shouldn't think. They did put it in there because, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, no, they didn't. Isn't the games at like seven or something like that? Yeah, I think they're at seven. You can always call the school and ask, but I think they're at like seven. They're at the game. Yeah, you just, instead of paying to get in, that's what they're gonna do and I think that's a wonderful thing to help, you know, give back to students for what they were going to do.
That's a nice thing for our rural community.
Yes.
Everybody working together.
Check.
All right.
Motion?
I make a motion to adjourn. Let's see, 7:25.
Wait a second.
Second.
Second, may I run? All papers are.
Aye.
Post same time, here, okay.